To all this meeting, our board, Trustee Morton, would you leave some prayer, please?
Thank you. Bow your head to the Lord. Our heavenly Father, we just uplift you and give you the glory and the praise. You know our hearts. You know that we're here tonight to do your work. We just ask that you give us the strength, the courage, the direction to make the right decisions and do the right thing for this great establishment, Trinity Valley Community College. Just be with our president of this great board and be with Dr. Jason Morrison as he does the work and all faculty members. We just ask you all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Consider public comments. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? None. Mr. Hopkins, would you want to do a review of the 24-25 budget proposal?
Sure. Everybody should have their book right now. I just mentioned there's a letter in the front along with the budget worksheet. And you've got an analysis of revenue, salaries, maintenance, operations, and capital. Does everybody has a chance to look that over? Please, but if you have any questions. The schedule going forward, now I'll talk just briefly about the numbers. At this time, we're in the process of calculating the property tax rollback rate. State law allows the CADS to until July 25th. And so, once we have that calculated, we will meet on the 12th for the board to propose a tax rate and a public hearing and so forth. So that's kind of digesting these numbers. The sheet in the front of your book, and the reason I want to mention this is it's final mainly because of the property taxes. Once we know if we're above or below the rollback rate, then we'll know what tax rate we need to set. As I've told the board before, the state law now is if you're above the rollback rate and you think you want to do that, then an election is automatic. So trust me when I say you want to, because you'll lose. And so, but as we sit here today, with the budget as proposed, we still have an excess of $1.3 million. You see that bottom of the second page. And that number will fluctuate as we solidify not only the property taxes, but we're still getting points on our liability insurance. Everybody remembers that every year. And that's going to be kind of interesting with the claims that we have outstanding. But I think we're in a real good place. I think it's a real good budget. The whole Budget Committee gives you some comments. But in August 12th, we will have what we believe will be final numbers for you. And first, we'll try to answer any questions if you have them tonight or let us know if you've had a chance to meet them.
Does anybody have any questions, David, already? Or if not, feel free to get back with Dr. Morrison or David and they can answer any questions. Thank you. Let's see. President. Yeah, okay, Dr. Morse.
All right. First, I just want to bring your attention to dates. As David mentioned, August 12th, we'll have a special board meeting. And then on August 26th, we'll have our regular board meeting, which will approve the budget at that time. Then August 15th, we have nurse pending in Palestine. So if you're interested, please let Morgan know and make sure you get all additional information for that nurse pending and about the ACC conference in Seattle, October 23rd to 26th. I'm going to reserve most of my time for interim Vice President Tammy Denison and Director of Recruitment, Dr. Courtney Skiles, to give an update on enrollment from the spring and summer and how we're looking for the fall. But I do want to have a special, kind of bring a special attention to some recognitions that occurred last week. Our Lady Cardinal softball team was recognized as the top academic softball team in the country for the NJCA for the second year in a row, so back-to-back, with a 3.81 team GPA. So kudos to that team and that program to be a top 20 program and also be a top academic team. Great work that Coach Winn is doing with that program and those young ladies and how they represent us. Also, I want to bring recognition to our volleyball team. They posted a 3.84 GPA and finished third in the country for as academic All-American team. So think about that. You have a top four team in the country, finished fourth in the country this year, then third in the country in academics. So great job that Coach Leah Hayes is doing with that program for the recognition. And then I want to bring recognition to our Lady Cardinal basketball team. They're recognized as the 13th best, we're talking all junior colleges in the country, 13th best GPA at 3.52. We had 36 young ladies honored as academic All-Americans this year. So we're definitely getting done in the classroom and on their playing surfaces. So a big shout out to those coaches and those young ladies for representing Trinity Valley well. So, but now I would like to turn my time over to Tammy to give us an update on our spring, summer, and how we're looking for fall enrollment. And Dr. Courtney Skiles will be assisting.
Good evening, board. So I want to preface with just a reminder that our enrollment numbers that we're presenting are in terms of full-time enrollment or FTE, not necessarily headcount, which is a little bit different than what has been presented in the past. We've been doing that over the last several months, so I just wanted to say that as a reminder. For the spring term, we ended up, after final numbers, our FTE was up 4.67%. For a total of, our FTE number was 3971, 3,971 students at an FTE rate. For summer, we have recently completed our summer census, or have approached our summer census and have final numbers there. And we were at 1509 FTE for the summer term. That's up 12.75% over summer of 2023. For fall of 2024, we won't have final numbers for fall until after our Fall '82 Census Day in October. Right now, we're trending at 3,448 FTE. Last year, we were at 4,170 was our total final number. Each week, as I've been tracking it, we've been closing the gap at about 5 to 5.5% each week. So at the end of last week, off of our final number last year, we were down 17.31. So that trending out to the start of the fall semester would leave us right even with where we were last year. And then we still have until mid-October to finalize those numbers. So our admissions recruiting department has done a great job this past year. And Dr. Courtney Skiles will give you an update on just some of the things that they've been working hard at. And then, of course, advising, I mean, registering all the students, helping them get on the end. They work tirelessly also. You know, it's always, as we get close to the first of the semester, some of our busiest times. And so we're looking forward to seeing exactly where we're going to end up. Marketing has also done a lot of things over the last year under Joanna Fredz. She's done, she's been amazing. So over the last year, just to add a few things to what Courtney's going to talk about, she wanted you to be aware that we are now doing digital ads on Spotify and Pandora, which is where my kids live these days. And then we're also doing free ads on the free streaming TV apps by Google TV, those types of streaming apps. So, and then I'll let Dr. Courtney Skiles update you on the things that we've been doing in recruiting and admissions.
Thank you, Kimmy. So for, I'm the Director of Recruiting and Admissions, so we kind of oversee the entire prospective student process, help them get all the way through admissions and then get registered. So a couple of the things that we have been doing this past year are nothing that we have historically been able to accomplish at TBCC. We use Element 451 as our customer relationship management platform. It is our, the manner in which we are able to communicate with all students, and it also houses the entire admissions process. Prior to having Element 451, 100% of the admission application data was hand-entered by admissions specialists. So everything from their name, their addresses, their birthdays, everything was hand-entered. Element 451, in this past year, we were able to finalize and API integration into Colley, which means that it automated our data entry process by a lot, and it has saved us a lot of time. It used to take us around 20 to 30 minutes per application, per student, to process, and we now have gotten that processing time down to three to five minutes per application, per student. So we have saved a significant amount of time, which has allowed us to process students at about a 44.5% faster rate than what we were in the previous year without it. So we are extremely excited about the way that we have been able to serve students in a more efficient manner. And to give you perspective, as of right now, heading into the fall, we've received over 3,900 applications. So 30 minutes per 3,900 applications, that's a lot of time that we don't have. So having this integration has been really integral for our success in the department. Also, this past semester, we have been busy recruiting as always. We have had a record number of group tours on campus and a record number of individual student tours. I think we're about 15% up from our last cycle of recruiting tours for individual tours. And then for group tours on campus, we had every single week booked with at least one group tour. So those are individual, or large groups from high schools ranging from maybe 15 to 100 students coming to visit campus, tour, sit down, interact with us, learn about campus, learn about other pathways. So we were very excited that we had more than ever, our guests more than ever on campus visiting with us. And then we also tracked a lot of our data from the time that we meet students out in the field. So if we meet them at a recruiting fair, whether we're in their classroom, whether they're here on campus, we collect data on what they're interested in. And from those students that we gather data from, we know that one in three of those students applies and becomes an admitted student here at TBCC. So we know that we have been able to be really effective in our recruiting strategies, and we also know that we're really effective in our ability to get these students through the admissions process so they can register for classes. But we have also been focused on having a more personalized approach to our students. So we have been working really closely with marketing and Joanna Fredz. We have been serving targeted ads to students and parents on their phones, letting them know that we would be in their area recruiting the day before, so they would get an ad served that said, "Hey, TBCC recruiting is going to be at Kaufman High School this day and this time. Come stop by and see us." We have also been working to do tailored email and text support to students once they tell us what they're interested in. So if a student tells us that they're interested in band and welding, we are working to serve students information on both of those programs simultaneously from the moment we gather that data. We have also been doing things with canned postcards after campus visits, just thanking them for visiting and being with us and spending time looking at TBCC, because we know this place is special and we want them to feel special. So while we do a lot every day, we are still focusing on the things that make TBCC unique. And one of the number one things that we tell our students is that we care, and I feel like that sets us apart from other institutions. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I do want to add a report from housing. We have a waitlist for housing. And I'm being told this might be the first time ever that we've had a waitlist for housing. And it's growing.
So that's great. Good news.
President, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I would like to address something to you, Courtney. I think you've been a fabulous staff just from your presentation, but I am interested to know how many people you have in your office to help you do all the things that you share?
I have two recruiters and two admissions specialists.
Wow.
So we're a team of five.
Wonderful. I'm ready to go. Thank you.
In reference to, Courtney, in reference to your target ad, once you identify potential targets, how often do you blast that particular family or student?
From the time that we're able to get their, either an email or a text message, we're reaching out to that student. Most of the time, it's just a "Hi, it was super nice to meet you. Let us know if you have any questions." And if they text that number back, they're able to connect with us, you know, in the office. They connect with Redbirds, which are our team of student recruiters that works with us. So 100% of the students that we reach in the field that say some sort of interest in TBCC reports that to us of getting communications.
I have another question. What's your traffic time that you will placing those advertisements in last year's evaluation?
So I'm not sure about the specifics of what time those ads are getting served. That would be a fantastic question for Joanna Fredz. I know from what we send admissions and recruiting-wise, we have the system set to monitor their preferred open rates. So it looks at, say, a student wakes up in the morning and checks their emails, and it can tell if they're opening their emails consistently around 8 o'clock in the morning, it'll send the emails to them around 8, make sure that it's on prime targeted delivery.
So once it's done, from text over the email?
Yes.
Is it doing Facebook?
They do a lot of Facebook ads. We don't do a lot of Facebook Messenger unless a student reaches out directly, in which case the marketing team would respond and kind of disperse those communications to whoever needs to help the student. You're welcome.
Is there a grade level of targeting or just open?
It's open. We start working with eighth grade, way younger, because students in the state of Texas have to pick a pathway by eighth grade.
Yes.
So we have been doing a lot more middle school outreach this year, especially in our Palestine service area, because we don't have a lot of students coming from the Palestinian to the Palestine campus. So it's important for us to be in front of young students as early as possible, so that way they know, you know, from the time they're 10, that we are an option and we are present in their community. But we work with middle schools all the time. If we're targeting high schools, we try to do the 10th, 11th, 12th grade range, because they're making college decisions.
Right.
But whoever wants us to come in and talk to their students, we are definitely open to any opportunity.
For the targeted ads, Joanna just sent me a message, and she said that they're sending them three times during the week prior to whatever event it is.
Great. All right.
Thank you all. All right, moving to the next order of business. Consider the minutes of the June 24th meeting. You all were sent in your packet minutes of the meeting to hear a motion to approve. Here it may. Trustee Morton, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Hopkins, financial report.
Sure. Just talk briefly about the May financials or Jim's loan area. Sounds a little bit like a broken record, but if you look at tuition fees and bookstore, you'll see the, in the variance column, those deficits. Almost all of that is due to the FAST program. But I did want to point out something, and we do get probably, we're going to receive a little pull-up of a million dollars of fast revenue back. But I wanted to point out, for example, on the bookstore, you see that's $110,000. They had $157,000 in FAST exemptions blown. And so, you know, they've made up some of that on their own for their savings. And so those numbers that you see, and my staff is working on a FAST analysis for the year. Hope to have that to you pretty soon. But we made up quite a bit, and the FAST revenue does help in that area. The, on the state appropriations, again, that number looks like 1.8 million. That's good. Part of that is, again, the way the state is paying us a three-pay system versus 10. You see in June there on that line, 12.299. We did get our last payment in June, which is much earlier than the payments finished up in the prior years. Again, property taxes still looking good as is investment income because of interest rates. I think I've got anything on the second page that you want to talk about. I guess I will say that this year compared to prior year, 14.5 million as of May revenue over expense versus 13.2 last year. Again, both of that, some of that is the way that we get paid revenue, but an extra $2 million in property taxes is the thing for profit there. Morgan, we could go on down to the investment report. In your, we always talk about cap reserve, because we got some of the bio code and agenda. Still sitting at 33, 34 million dollars in cap reserve. We still got 8.2 in operating. And the next page, cap reserve projects there, you can see those. Jennifer played those out. We're still working on the Palestine building. That's engineering on the Terrell building. And again, even with the transfers that are going to be coming out, the 210,000, we're still sitting at 33 now. You know, you're still right at 34. And I think more than a lot of our area knows this, but every month, we do move money in there. That's a part of the budget. I think everybody's aware of that. Last page, we'll briefly, just is the over 25,000. You can see some of your construction expenses in there. As usual, if anybody has a question, my colleagues do write.
Do you have any questions from the board? And your motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
Seconded by Trustee Stumby. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion passed. All right. Next order of business, consider and discuss cap reserve product prospects as presented. Phase one.
All right. As we kind of finish on our first year, and we brought Marcus on in February, we've been working very aggressively creating a capital facility improvement plan for all aspects of the college. This is going to occur over the next, you know, possibly four to five years to address facility needs. In doing so, we've had a roof analysis. We're working on mechanical analysis. Dressing is basically dated issues. And before you, I'm excited to present for you is phase one of the capital improvements to address some, many of our facility needs. From addressing the Mac Journalism Building to sidewalk repairs, to the front drainage and to address the sign that has not been functioning for over six to probably nine months now. We have a natural spring that runs underneath the sign, which has caused it to sink. So maybe we'll start bottling water and have Trinity Valley water. To waterproofing South Hall, to roof replacements, which has been one of the big issues addressing campuses. You see, there's a lot of roof replacements from Cardinal Gym Fitness Center, Northwest Dorm, the Soccer Field House. Interior renovations that we're currently doing to West Hall, we want to do the same to South Hall. New flooring, new painting, new lighting in South Hall. To some additional drainage to addressing the Palestine Auditorium. It is severely outdated. And also to update the bathrooms when May gets here in West Hall. So let's say a total of $2.5 million, just much-needed capital improvement. That's the first proposal. The second proposal, as we navigate through the insurance claim in the Terrell Health Science Center, we'd like to go ahead and proceed with the roof replaced. We have received acknowledgement from the adjuster that they're going to approve a full roof replacement. We want to go ahead and get, since we are in a good position as institution, we would like to go ahead and get started with that full replacement as we navigate through the insurance claim process. And this will get us fully back operational and with minimum, as punch as possible, disruption to our students. And those are two proposals for you seeking board approval.
So do you want to have any questions regarding these two proposals? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion been made by Trustee Mayfield, seconded by Trustee. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Consider and discuss bachelor approvals.
All right. As you all know, we, at Trinity Valley, we have the ability to offer up to five bachelor degrees. We currently have the Bachelor of Science in Nursing. Our second, that we're seeking board approval, which then we'll seek coordinating board approval, TA approval, and SACSE approval. If you ever wonder why it takes so long to start a program, many steps of approval. We feel like this, and I want to first say thank you to Dr. Spencer Ragley, Eric Richardson, and Suzette Stringer, who's back there somewhere. They have worked tirelessly on this project, and it has become like a child to them to see this program put in place. And it is something that we've seen, a lot of positive feedback from our ISDs. As the teacher shortage is widely known in this area, and we see this as opportunity to help schools grow their own teachers and help them stay at Trinity Valley from start to finish, from an early childhood degree to your degree to elementary education degree here. As you see through your packet, you can see the information for our projections on enrollment, tuition and fees. You can also see projections based on the performance funding formula. Would Suzette or Eric or anybody, Spencer, you have anything you would like to add at this time of the program? Oh, I didn't, there you are. I'm sorry. I did not see you hidden back there. Sorry, Dr. Talia.
This is the change. So yes, we are asking you to, after that we submit the proposal to the Texas Department of Education Boarding Board on August 26th. We've been writing the proposal. That will not only help our current students be able to reach the bachelor's degree in education, but help the teacher shortage in Texas. And there's also research showing the impact on students whenever they're, it's no fault to the teacher that's in the classroom, but teachers that are alternatively certified are not helping the students as much if they are traditionally certified as a teacher. So we would like to help grow Texas, increase teachers through the traditional method. And it's, we're definitely seeing the effects. I teach education classes. I think last semester, my Sergeant, one class, we just began with education. I had students who were actually higher than I thought. Before they finished their associates, before they finished their pole, just knowing about education, they were lost. Now, don't get me wrong, the schools are giving them mentors, but the mentors are so overworked, they can't get them. So the whole process, they left my program, and they're constantly emailing questions. What do I do here? What do I do here? I have a backhand here. And so those teachers are the ones that have been five years burnout. And in the same process, they have not had their clinicals with that certified teacher, and so they don't know how to handle here and there. Hey, you're, and so they're lost, and so they also don't have the clinical experience to reach the children. And therefore, we're losing our teachers and we're losing our children. And we're seeing a 2% to 4% loss for those students with better, I don't know, the credential. And I'm not saying the credential programs are not good, just that the old, you know, old true foundation, traditional program is what parts of the credential program is.
old, you know, old true foundation, traditional program is what parts of the journey, they need to be within expert. And that is a teacher.
And our student, another thing that we're, first of all, this program will be offered all online. So we're servicing not only our our local teachers in training, but we can reach to other places in Texas. And Miss Stringer, Holly and I, we're committed to everything in the curriculum being geared towards those teacher certification tests that they have to take. Because as mentioned earlier, our teachers that are going traditional, that are going through all the process of all the clinicals, the student teaching. And they are doing much better passing those teacher certification tests than those that are going through the alternative. And so that's a, so all online, being able to offer um here specifically to the test, those certifications they're going to have to have to be able to stay in the classroom. And we were talking earlier, in the fall, I, the first time in my career and I was an adjunct part. We are at max in our online education class. We've never hit there. So there's that need and we have teachers that want to be in the classroom. So um, I'm very excited, you know, I have face-to-face courses as well. But I'm just excited that we're getting this amount of interest. And a lot of those students are aware of the future degree. Um, since twenty twenty-one, when it was sort of a thought about, you know, inkling uh about the program, I started asking my students, what do you think? Uh, when can we get enrolled? You know, they're ready to sign up. So um, a hundred percent of them said they would have enrolled. Not a problem. They'd rather be at Trinity Valley than anywhere else. You know, it's just the relationships, she was talking about, these relationships that you build and that's what they want.
I can tell you a few stories from students that did graduate with their associate's degree and then never went on to get their bachelor's because of the difficulty of transferring. And even one of those local universities, I got on the phone and tried to help the student get transferred and it just never went through. And she, to this day, is hired, uh, but she ended up doing all certification through her school district. So I do think that we'll see the majority of our students that finish the associates will apply to go on to get their bachelor's with us. There's also only two community colleges in the state of Texas that have this bachelor's degree, Weatherford College and Dallas College. Uh, Dallas College has um agreed to do the teach out with us and Weatherford College, the three of us traveled there about a month ago and sat down and visited with their director and coordinator of their bachelor's program. And they are a hundred percent on board. They shared all of their documentation, um, their degree framework and everything with us um to help us get this program started. So they want to see us, um, produce teachers here in East Texas. Um, the same, same way that they're doing in Weatherford. And
How do you, uh, maybe Marcus itself, but when you getting ready to roll this out, how will you? I know we have a base of students that have gone here, but how do you market it to the world, sort of speak?
Just not last Wednesday, but the Wednesday before, we were writing and Calico ISD, their curriculum director called us, called Suzette. And um, just in that conversation about a different certificate, um, she asked about it. And she said, I have parents that need to know about this and need to know about it right now. How can I get this? How can I get that ready? We're like, well, slow down. We don't even have it approved. Uh, but we do have already letters signed by Sir Bronser, Crandall ISD. May Bay ISD, Mark Mortill, Athens, the superintendent called Suzette today and said that she would be in full support of that and give us a letter of support. Um, so the, the superintendents and the principals, um, looking to help their parents get get certified and get into their programs.
As a former principal, Mark Mill, last week, prior to his job, we had years, I know a lot of principals and superintendents. So my job will be to get to their offices, to go and meet with them personally and, you know, like, what do you need, what not different rooms? So, and you know, we're doing that already. We talked to our superintendents with full credit meeting. Um, so it's, it's, I'm gonna get down.
To me, kudos to y'all because I think this is what we're doing to help our district and not just our district, but we're making an impact.
I have a question. Will this be a hundred percent entirely online or will there be classroom instruction available?
So the clinical experiences need to have some face-to-face involvement. As she said, the relationship building, there needs to be some meetings that they come to campus for revising or Zoom meetings, depending on where they are. But, so there are some contortions that that we want to make sure that we have that time with them. But um, the, the program is built to be a lot of life to help them.
And a lot of times it's your parent educators that are going back so they don't have the time during the day to get online for a class. One thing that we've also discussed is hiring our adjuncts. We wanna make sure that we are building those relationships in order to build those relationships online. You gotta reply to your students. You gotta talk to your students. You gotta, you gotta get on and do Zoom meetings for them. So that is gonna be one of our, our main, is to make sure that we are communicating and not just saying it's online and.
Thank you. I think it's much needed. In reference to the clinical piece, uh, talk and share with me a little bit more about what that look like because I've been a mentor for a while. What I have seen without that clinical piece, you're in the classroom, spending time teaching, learning. That's a big component that's missing. And trying to work with that online.
So our goal is to be a uh teacher preparation program.
Okay.
And so it, it requires a certain number of hours in the classroom. So uh, being a traditional program, they would work up to two full semesters out in the in the classroom teaching as a student teacher.
Old school.
Yes.
Yeah, student teaching.
Six, eighteen weeks, that's to get a hand-on experiment.
Associates thirteen oh one and twenty-three oh one. We require them to do sixteen hours of observation within that classroom for certified teachers. So they're getting that idea and then they come back from the classroom online telling what they've learned.
Okay.
And and so we're, we're getting it, getting it.
Much needed. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Here in none, do we hear a motion? Alright, Mr. Morton, seconded by Dr. Eastern. We've had a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Alright. Consider and discuss safety, security, uh, security audit two thousand twenty-four.
Uh, do this every year. We just seeking board approval for twenty twenty-four safety and security audit. If you have any questions, Marcus can provide some details.
We don't need approval. This is.
Oh, this information. Sorry. This is information.
Any questions on this topic? Okay, well, we'll just move on. Consider and discuss policy update forty-seven.
Um, we need to update our, as the kind of legal and local before you had in your board package, is the notes and information for the updates. We just need board approval. If we had any direct questions, Dr. Dotson's here to provide answers.
Any questions? Do we need to vote on this?
Oh, that one, no.
Because I think we only on local, we have to say, okay, you know, is there nothing local or is?
Yeah, only local. People, people does not require interaction.
Okay. Do we hear a motion on this topic? Mayfield, seconded by Christie Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Motion carry.
We need uh seeking board approval for our adult senior education. She, the board approves the student handbook and associate tuition and fees for adult and junior education.
We're here a motion on this item. Or any, any questions? Here in none, do we have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Opposed and carries. Alright, now we're gonna convene to an executive session, according to Texas Government Codes five five one point oh seven four, the Texas Open Mean Jack for the following purposes, liberate the appointment employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer employee or to hear a complaint or charge against a public officer employee. We'll be back in a moment.
We need some.
Okay, it's all in favor?
Aye.
You guys want me to say, take notes for one day or do you think?
Uh, yeah, we can say.
Okay, uh, do we hear a motion to approve the matters discussed in an executive session?
So moved.
Their second, second by Christie Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item number thirteen.
Our last item.
Last item, yeah, personnel matter.
Uh, just seeking board approval of personnel updates, um, resignation, termination, non-renewals, new hires, reclassification, adjustment and promotions.
Any questions? Do we hear a motion to approve? Motion made, seconded by Christie Morton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, one last thing. We need, we hear a motion to adjourn. May, Christie Stone.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Thank you all.
Thank you.